Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to County Council meeting taking place on Wednesday, the 20th of July 2022. The meeting has been broadcasted live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, please? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. There remains a one-way system in operation in the council chambers. If you need to leave the chamber at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and re-enter the room. Face masks and social distancing are no longer mandatory, however, I would ask that you consider wearing a face mask if you need to move around the chamber. The windows will be open today to provide as much ventilation as possible and water has been provided in the council foyer. As in all our previous council meetings, any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of the committee service team will assist. I would be grateful if members could be COVID considerate towards those staff members approaching along the rows of seating by wearing a face mask if possible. Finally, I would like to extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending the You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. Item one, the minutes. Can I have a mover?
Chair, can I move the minutes?
And a seconder?
Second the minutes, Madam Chair.
To confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 22nd of June 2022, are the minutes agreed? Item two, declaration of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. On the minutes, I mean, the minutes have been agreed now and so I obviously was a bit late in putting my request to speak, but could I ask a question? Because I did ask a question at the last meeting on the leaders' report and it's not actually minuted. I'm happy enough that everyone's agreed to the minutes, but I would just like some clarification about whether questions from this side of the room are actually minuted when we ask them with the response from the leader, and the leader did give me a response. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could just pick that one up, we can obviously, as you say, Counselor Gunn, the minutes have been agreed now, obviously we can check and come back to you. Obviously, there is absolutely no intention to miss questions from one side of the room or miss answers from the other side of the room. Thank you, Chair.
Item three, chair's announcements. Before I make my announcements for today's meeting, can I ask that everyone is respectful to each other during the meeting and observe the members' code of conduct? Thank you. First, we start off with the exceptional news that children's services in County Durham have been rated good by Ofsted following a recent inspection which covered children's social care services provided by the council, including safeguarding children in care, care levers, fostering and adoption. The inspector's report praised those in charge of children's services at the council, rating the impact of the leaders as outstanding. Since the last meeting, I have attended a number of events relating to the Armed Forces Day, the Future Business Magnates Award and the Queen's Baton Relay, an event which was a fantastic occasion for County Durham. It was brilliant to see our amazing baton bearers carrying the baton through the county, being cheered on by spectators along the way. It was also fabulous to see the 300 schoolchildren at Durham Racecourse who encouraged the baton bearers. Item four, leaders' report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our last full council before the summer break, especially given the weather conditions at the moment. I hope you are all managing to feel a little bit cooler today, but with the weather, the summer ahead of us, I'd like to take the opportunity to remind you of the need to take extra care in the sun and to look out for others, and would encourage everyone to look at our heatwave plan, which is available on the website, to ensure we're able to safely enjoy the warmer weather over the next few weeks. Our initiative to create a network of electric vehicle charging points across the county was recently recognised at the MG Awards, where our scaling of on-street charging initiative won the award for best EV charging project. Our e-learning course to tackle littering was highly commended in the digital transformation category. I'd like to place on record our congratulations to all staff involved with those projects. Meanwhile, members of our Warm and Healthy Homes team have been crowned National Energy Champions of the Year at the Energy Awards. The award recognises the team's work to support people affected by higher living costs who may suffer ill health as a consequence of not being able to pay their energy bills. And finally, we have once again made it on to the list of the country's top 100 employers for apprenticeships. As well as being one of only two local authorities on the list, we are now ahead of household names such as BP, Jaguar Land Rover and Santander. I'm sure you will join me in congratulating everyone involved in these projects and thanking them for all their hard work. As I've already mentioned, this is our last meeting before the summer recess and I hope you'll all have an enjoyable break. Over the coming weeks, there will be lots to do across County Durham, including the fantastic Sea and Food Festival at the beginning of August, so please do make the most of what's on offer as well as having a well-deserved rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the report? Counselor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. I wonder whether the leader would join me in thanking all of our emergency services and council staff for keeping our community safe over the past few days in what has been extreme weather conditions.
Thank you, Leader.
Of course, Counselor Marshall, I'm sure the whole chamber would support that, so thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Can I ask the council to note the report, please? Item five, question from the public. One question has been received for today's meeting. Can I hand over to the deputy monitoring officer, who will explain the procedure?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. The question today is from Mr Cunningham and is being displayed on the screen. Mr Cunningham is unable to attend the meeting, therefore a written response will be provided to Mr Cunningham. A copy of the response and the question will also be posted on the council's website. Thank you.
Item six, petitions. No petitions have been received for today's meeting. Item seven, report from the cabinet. There's no report from the cabinet for today's meeting. Item eight, youth justice plan 2022 to 2023. Can I invite Martin Stenton, Head of Early Help Inclusion in Voluble and Children, to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, councillors. This report covers the youth justice plan for the year ahead, highlights some of our key achievements and our service improvement priorities. Producing a youth justice plan is a statutory requirement for us and is a condition of the grant we receive each year from the Youth Justice Board. In producing the plan, we have followed detailed guidance from the board and we submitted it to them by their end of June deadline, and that followed approval from our multi-agency Youth Justice Management Board. When we put the plan together and the report for council, we were still awaiting confirmation of our grant from the Youth Justice Board. I'm pleased to say we've now had that grant through and there's a significant and welcome increase on the funding that we're due to receive this year, which is up nearly 10% compared with last year. A few of our key achievements are in the report. The performance of our service is measured against some nationally set measures, and we have noted at paragraph five the latest available data. First-time entrance to the youth justice service is measured by the rate per 10,000 of 10 to 17-year-olds. The latest data shows our rate for County Durham is 147 per 10,000, and this is a welcome reduction of 64% since 2015. For re-offending, the data shows a significant and welcome reduction in our re-offending rate, which is down from nearly 50% a couple of years ago to just over 33%. Our recent data on custodial sentences and the use of remand bed nights also shows welcome reductions. We continue to do a lot of work with victims of crime, both young people and adults, and over the last year, we did restorative work with over 140 people, and at any one time, we have around 35 young people working with us through a support group which they named themselves with youth in mind. We also arranged recently to meet with some of them with the Police and Crime Commissioner. The service continues to prioritise its work with young people who are persistently offending. This includes an enhanced intensive and trauma-informed model of working with this group of young people. Within the plan, we've also set out our service improvement priorities for the year ahead, which also link to our inspection preparation arrangements, and the Chair mentioned our full children's services inspection earlier, and it seems we're never very far away from an inspection in children's services. The work we're doing over the year ahead includes improving the interventions we complete with young people and ensuring that we listen and respond to what young people and their families are telling us. Alongside this more formal plan, which has been designed to meet the YJB's requirements, we're also producing a shorter and more accessible version of the plan. So, turning to the recommendations, Chair, council is invited to note the contents of the report and receive the youth justice plan for 2223. Thank you.
Can I have a mover?
Chair, can I move the recommendations in the report? Having a detailed and updated plan to work with the children, young people and their families who come into contact with the justice system is very important to us and our wider communities. The plan highlights a continued high level of performance and improvement during 2122. The national measures of first-time entrance to the youth justice scheme, re-offending by young people dealt with by the police and courts, and the use of custody also show continued improvements in performance. We know there's more to do and there are concerns about increases in crime, including youth crime, as we emerge from the COVID pandemic. I welcome the service improvement plan and confirmation of additional government funding to the service, which has just been announced. Many young people who became known to the service because they are defended or because they are victims of crime often need a lot of support from a number of different services, and I welcome the strength of our partnership arrangements to do this work and the commitment of local partners to this important agenda. I'll move the recommendations within the report unless the council supports that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. A seconder?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the value of this report and support this updated youth justice plan for the year ahead, and acknowledge our partnership approach to supporting young people who have offended, along with people in our county who are victims of youth crime. The plan outlines how we are focusing local partner resources on targeted interventions, particularly on those young people committing the most offences, improving the quality of our assessments and plans, but also ensuring that we listen and respond to what young people and their families are telling us. Therefore, we are undertaking a very welcome child-first approach and further improving the quality of interventions we undertake with young people. I support the recommendations in the report, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sheatt. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Counselor Gunn?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to say a huge thank you to the youth justice service in Durham. This is a service that is often, it often lies outside of the spotlight, and yet it carries such a massive amount of work on many levels to improve the lives of young people. And I just want to say, Chair, that I'm sure everybody's read the report, but if you haven't, then I urge you to read it because it provides many of the programmes that our youth justice service actually provides and the outcomes of those, which Martin has set out and they've very clearly set out in the report. It's very difficult to actually do justice, no pun intended, to this report in a short presentation. So, it is seriously a compelling read. You learn a lot from this report about what this service actually does. So, my grateful thanks to the youth justice service of County Durham for carrying on, and they have actually improved the lives of young people over many, many years, and for carrying on the programme that was set in place some years ago and continues to improve those lives. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. Can I ask the council to approve the youth justice plan for 202223, please? Item nine, adoption of Cotherstone Parish neighbourhood plan. Can I invite Geoff Paul, interim corporate director of Regeneration, Economy and Growth, to present this report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This report sets out to counsel the proposal to formally adopt or in technical terms make the Cotherstone neighbourhood plan. The 2011 Localism Act introduced measures for local communities to prepare neighbourhood development plans. A detailed legislative framework for undertaking planning in neighbourhoods was set out in the Neighbourhood Planning Regulations of 2012. To date, the council have made eight such plans in Walton and Westwick, Great Acliff, Sedgfield, Witten Gilbert, Durham City, Lanchester, Organ Shaw and Caspum Quarantet. A number of further plans remain under preparation. The Cotherstone neighbourhood plan relates to the whole of the Cotherstone parish area. The parish council group have progressed the plan through the statutory consultation stages, and the examination ran from September to November 2021. This was undertaken using written representations. The final report was formally submitted to the County Council on 23rd of February this year. The examiner concluded that the neighbourhood plan met all of the statutory requirements. However, a small number of recommendations for modification were needed to enable the plan to satisfy the basic conditions and proceed to referendum. These amendments were carried out and the referendum was held on the 7th of July. There was a turnout of 29% and 90.63% were in favour of the neighbourhood plan. Subject to agreement by full council, formal decision statement will be issued in accordance with Regulation 19 of the Neighbourhood Planning Regulations of 2012. This will be published on the council's website and installed in appropriate locations, including County Hall and the parish council office in the neighbourhood plan area. Copies will also be sent to those who have commented on the plans. Finally, Chair, the neighbourhood plan, once adopted, will form part of the County Durham local plan.
Can I have a mover?
Yes, Chair. Could I start by commending the residents of Cotherstone on their hard work in preparing their neighbourhood plan over the last few years? I do know how much goes into these things. Their endeavours have been suitably rewarded by an overwhelmingly positive response in the recent referendum. It's therefore clear that the policies in these neighbourhood plans reflect the priorities of local people, and they will now be used by planning officers when considering planning applications in these areas. I therefore propose the recommendations in paragraph four of the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. Could I have a seconder, please?
As local member chair, I'm happy to second this report. The parish of Cotherstone has been working on this for a number of years, I think at least five. It's been a very long and arduous and thorough process. I'm very pleased that it's been endorsed by quite a healthy turnout and an overwhelming majority of residents that voted a couple of weeks ago, and I hope that appropriate notice of it is taken in future planning matters, both by officers and members of this council. So, I'm very happy to second the recommendations as in paragraph four.
Thank you, Counselor Bell. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to approve the recommendations in the report? Item 10, motions on notice. There are four motions for consideration. The motions will be dealt with in order in which they were received and detailed on the agenda. Motion from councillor M Stett, motion from councillor L Holmes, motion from councillor C Hunt, motion from councillor J Quinn. The first motion was carried over from the previous meeting. I will hand over to the deputy monitoring officer to explain the procedures.
Thank you, Chair. As usual, movers of motions have five minutes to speak, seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate turns to the amendment. Each member can speak once on an amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but otherwise may not speak on it. If, following the vote, an amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Michael Steed, can you move your motion, please?
Thanks, Chair. Fellow councillors, my motion asks for the government to recognise that we are a rural county and fund us appropriately. It further asks for help for the government to consider more help It further asks for help for the government to consider more help for the residents and so, and call for a summit to be called, hang on a second here, and call for a summit to be called by the council and the relevant organisations to work to help the people of County Durham. I am absolutely delighted to confirm that the leader and deputy leader of the council have written to the government, laying out each aspect of my motion and asking for reconsideration of our rural status, and to make sure that they consider more help for the residents. I have also received confirmation from councillor Alan Shield, the council's equalities and social inclusion portfolio, hope I got that right, Alan, that we indeed do work on the summit. So, given that all aspects of my motion have been agreed and actioned by the joint administration, I'd like to say thank you, well done, and I withdraw my motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Stedt. Councillor Luke Holmes, can you move your motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Unhealthy weight is a significant health issue for children and their families. There can be serious physical and mental health implications which can continue into adulthood. Working with partners, healthcare professionals play an important role, supporting families to take action by delivering whole-system approaches to tackle unhealthy weight. Action across the child life course is essential to impact unhealthy eating and enable positive behaviour to change around eating and activity. In the two thousand and eighteen-to-nineteen school year, around three in four children in reception were a healthy weight. In year six, around two-thirds were a healthy weight. Physical activity and a healthy diet can help children and young people to achieve and maintain a healthier weight. That's why I'm moving the motion as tabled, and I ask the council to note that eating disorders and excess weight are public health concerns for our county, and I ask members to agree to a whole-system approach to promote healthy weight by supporting people to reduce excess calorie intake and increase physical activity. I'm asking the council to work across the whole system with our communities, families, education settings, employers and the VCS to address food poverty and to increase access to affordable, healthy food, to promote healthy food options and to promote and increase access to physical activity. The Eat Well Guide makes recommendations on how we can all eat more healthily. The guide informs us of the nutrients in foods and can be used as a tool to ensure meals are nutritious and healthy, which is essential for a good diet. Given the importance of healthy food, I'm asking this council to call on partners across the whole system to work with government recommendations on healthy eating and adopt the Eat Well Guide as the standard they aim to achieve for their food offer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Holmes. Could we have a seconder, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Ken Robson, Aycliffe West. I'm seconding councillor Holmes's proposal. I think it's a very good proposal, and I think it's something we can all agree on. I have a following statement to read. Evidence shows a significant relationship between maternal obesity and the birth of babies above a normal weight, and the subsequent development of childhood and adult obesity. Children who live in a family where at least one parent or carer is living with obesity are more at risk of growing up to be above a healthy weight. Children living with obesity are more likely to become adults living with obesity, and thus increase the risk of obesity for their own children later in life. And a poor diet and low levels of physical activity are the prime factors of excess weight. So, it's evident to me that to combat the public health concern, we need to encourage healthy eating, which is why I'm pleased to second this motion.
Thank you, councillor Robson. Councillor Hovell?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Hovell, Shrimpton and Donny Division. I propose this amendment to councillor Holmes's motion. As a council, we pride ourselves on excellent partnerships, which we heavily rely on to be successful, delivering initiatives across our communities, and there's many of them. The Health and Wellbeing Board is a prime example of the council's working with our partners. I'm sure all members would join me in placing our thanks and gratitude on record to all of our partners for all of the hard work they have delivered, especially throughout this Covid pandemic, and continue to do so across our county. Partnerships do not happen overnight. It takes time, and we nurture and build upon the positive, professional and productive work and relationships. The Eat Well Guide applies to most of us, whether we are healthy weight or overweight, meat eaters or vegetarians, have dietary requirements or not. Those with medical needs might need to check with the registered dietitian on how to adapt their Eat Well Guide to meet the individual needs. There is not one blanket approach on this. What it does not do is apply to children under the age of two. Those between two and five have different nutritional needs, and the Eat Well Guide highlights that they should gradually move to eating the same foods as their families. The five-day is not a choice, as fruit and veg is not always an option, due to the cost of supply in some of our rural communities. Transport costs also play a part, and is a hurdle to getting to and from supermarkets can be unaffordable. Many of our residents are accessing food banks and community pantry projects. Lack of money and circumstances in people's lives removes the choice about what some of our residents can eat. I see that within my own community. We have a healthy start food voucher for baby milk. These schemes are essential way of ensuring the neediest babies and children get the nutrition they need. With the impact of inflation and the price of baby milk, which has risen, I might say by fourteen per cent in recent months, this on top of the soaring cost of fruit and veg, and giving new families one more financial struggle to worry about. Our residents are battling with the cost of living, which is only going to get worse. We heard that on the television this morning. Every time I put the news on, that's what I'm hearing. I don't need to tell people. People can see it within our own communities. Families are struggling to make ends meet, and many working hard but seeing their living standards falling. I call on all members in this chamber to vote for the amendment, which will help our residents and support our partners to continue to deliver the amazing work they are. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hovell. Could we have a seconder on that, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Angela Thirties, shadow member for communities inclusion. I'd like to formally second the recommendation and reserve the right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thirties. Councillor Paul Sexton?
Thank you, Chair. As portfolio holder for adult and health services, which includes public health, I think we should all aspire to the Eat Well Guide, and generally healthy eating and balanced diets. And I appreciate the sentiment and what everybody's saying around affordability and availability. I'm glad that councillor Holmes brought this forward to do this motion, and I wholeheartedly support it. I think the amendment is more of a fundamental change, and I would say if legal would look into that, it is a wholesale change. And it's not that I necessarily disagree with it, it probably needs to be a separate motion in itself. But I want to point out that as part of the Health and Wellbeing Board, we're already looking at more than just the Eat Well Guide, we're not just relying on that. We've looked at obesity and high fat and salt and sugar. We took a briefing a couple of months ago on that. We'll be implementing recommendations as we progress. We've also got a briefing last month on hot food takeaway and including a masterclass scheme. And that's basically looking at the whole-system approach to unhealthy weight, hot food takeaways prior to and during the pandemic, and the obvious increases that the pandemic had, and also the hot food takeaway masterclass, which basically goes out with a questionnaire engaging with our retailer outlets, and basically persuading them through a tried-and-tested training package from Kirkley's Council to try and offer more affordable and more healthy, balanced food on takeaways. But I take everybody's point on board, but I just think councillor Luke Holmes's motion should stand as it is, and I fully support it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sexton. Can I bring in James, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to pick up on councillor Sexton's point, all of, this amendment has been checked beforehand. I'm satisfied that it doesn't negate the original motion. The rules on debate allow for words to be added, words to be taken away. This clearly relates to the original motion. It doesn't directly contradict the original motion, so it is valid. Thank you.
Councillor Kevin Shaw, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Kevin Shaw, Dordon. Advising my residents in Dordon Ward to follow the Eat Well Guide to improve health and reduce obesity is gaslighting. In Dordon South Two, LSO area, forty-six-point-four per cent of children live in relative poverty. Thirty-eight-point-seven per cent of children live in absolute poverty. As bad as that sounds, that was twenty-twenty-one, prior to the current cost of living crisis. The previous figures were as a result of the last twelve years of austerity introduced by the Tory Lib Dem coalition government, which is the longest squeeze on living standards since Napoleonic times. We now have inflation running at nine-point-four per cent in the last year to June, so average food bills have risen nine-point-four per cent since then. These prices are causing huge problems to families. Food poverty is a symptom of real poverty, poverty which results in fuel poverty, poverty which results in energy poverty, poverty which then results in housing poverty, poverty which then results in food poverty. Eight-point-four million people in the UCA are experiencing poverty. The Department of Health defines food poverty as the inability to afford or have access to food to make up a healthy diet. People now cannot afford access food to make up a healthy diet, and in many cases cannot afford a kirkwood even if they could. A recent news article reads from the chairman of Iceland, desperate Britons are turning down potatoes and root vegetables at food banks due to the surging cost of cooking them. People are rejecting common household items because they cannot afford the energy to boil them. Follow the Eat Well Diet. This motion might as well say to the people in County Durham, in the region of highest deprivation in the country, follow the Yellow Brick Road. So my recommendation to the wizard from Spennymower is withdraw your condescending motion and for members to support the amendment.
Point of order, Chair. That was a very personal remark, Chair. I'd like some advice on whether that should actually have been made in the chamber.
Could you retract that statement, please, that image?
My understanding of wizard is one who is especially skilled or unusually talented. If it pleases the Chair, I'm more than happy to remove the complimentary comment.
You remove it, do you? You take it back.
I will remove the complimentary comment, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Tinsley?
Thank you, Chair. I think this is a, it's a really important issue, but I think we spoke about the fact that the cost of taking this on for many families is just not an option in County Durham. But there's another element to this that's really significant. We have to understand that the power that the food industry has in terms of lobbying, it's one of the largest industries on the planet, and it funds lobbying into government. And that's why it's actually really annoying to me, on the point of being disingenuous when I see this, in that, yes, there was the sugar tax introduced in twenty-eighteen, which was a good thing, but in June of this year, Henry Dimbleby, who was chairman of the Leon Restaurant chain, he reported to government on a report that would increase tax incentives towards the manufacturers, the people with the deep pockets, not the actual consumers of this food, and it would introduce tax credits to them, which would encourage them to take sugar and salt out of food, which is the core problem with this. What really gets me is that on the eleventh of June, Boris Johnson, remember him? He said that introduction of such a tax levy on the manufacturers would be, quote-unquote, "unattractive". So for a member of the same party as Boris Johnson to stand up and promote this is, to me, a little disingenuous. I won't refer to him as a wizard in that context, but I would say that in the context that we must understand that the impact, the costs of this are on the manufacturer, and they are not on the consumer of food, I will be supporting the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Tinsley. Councillor Andrews?
Veronica Andrews, councillor for Burnhamfield and Dipton. I'm supporting the amendment as the original motion appears a little naive to me. For many adults and children in England who are living in poverty, eating healthy food is secondary to eating at all. Poverty and inequality are the driving forces which determine whether people can be active or eat healthily, increasing the risk of obesity. Until the government recognises the impact of poverty and inequality on society, nothing will change. The impact of hunger and poor diet on children has a lifelong impact. It impacts on long-term health, it impacts on future career choices, and it impacts on the child's ability to learn and therefore to a good education, which will help to end this cycle. Access to healthy food should be a right, not a privilege. These comments have come from the Royal College of Physicians. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Richard Bell?
Thank you, Chair. Could I ask the officers to scroll back to the top of the amendment, please? And can I actually make a formal objection to the way that this amendment has been brought? It's not acceptable to bring an amendment without sight to the members of this council that is incapable of being displayed on the screen as one shot. How are we supposed to judge the acceptability of an amendment when we can't see it? And yes, I would like paper copies, please, of amendments tabled in advance and future. I would make a formal complaint about the way this amendment has been brought. This amendment distorts the original motion to the point of unrecognizability. Yes, food poverty is a very important issue, which we all recognise in our communities. It is quite open to members opposite to bring forward a motion specifically about food poverty, but there is a lot more to healthy eating than food poverty. Councillor Gunn actually recognised, councillor Hovell's recognised that in her speech, but the opening paragraph of that says, "Whole-systems approach is required to support people who live in food poverty, eat a more healthy diet". This amendment therefore excludes everybody who does not officially live in food poverty. I would suggest that is pretty much everybody in this chamber. Quite a few of us, myself included, could do with a little bit more actual healthy eating, an instruction on healthy eating and lifestyle choices and all the rest of it, and that is what the Eat Well Guide in the health service, Health Service website proposes to do. There is a lot more that needs to be done. Our schools have educational standards, for instance, in provision of their school meals, but it doesn't stop children on their way to school calling at the local garage and stocking up with high-energy drinks, sugary snacks, bags of Doritos, et cetera, which then make them hyper-energetic, difficult to control, and then they have a subsequent energy crash afterwards, which makes them difficult to engage and stimulate. There is a whole lot of stuff about healthy eating and healthy lifestyle that everybody needs to be aware of, including those in food poverty. So to me, the amendment more or less negates the original motion, or certainly distorts it beyond recognizability, and I would urge all members to support the original motion and vote against this amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bell. James?
Chair, yeah, if I could just reiterate the point that I made to councillor Sexton in relation to councillor Bell's first point. In relation to the motion being displayed on the screen, we will cycle through, so all members do have the opportunity to see the entirety of the amended motion. As for paper copies being distributed, that's not currently a provision within the constitution, though I imagine it's a matter that can be picked up at a future constitution working group. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Wilkes, please?
Thanks, Chair, although I did actually remove my, I did actually remove myself from the list. Could you display the second paragraph? Or the second page? I think it's the second, it could be the third, fourth, fifth or seventh, or I know. I'm just trying to understand where, is that the right one? No, I think it's the next one after that one. No, I think it's the next one after that one. You see the point here, don't you? I'm supposed to know what I'm actually voting on when I can't even read it all. I do think there's a couple of sentences here that in future perhaps officers could have a word with the people who are presenting them to check that grammatically they actually make sense. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Jackson, please.
Thank you, Chair. I too am having difficulty understanding the amendment, the motion. It is very difficult, even when it is cycled through the screen, for us to be fully aware of what actually is being said. I've been to full council sessions before and I've never been in the situation where we haven't been able to see the motion on a piece of paper and consider it in its full light. I would like us to go back to page one, please, the very beginning of the motion. Yes, that is the relevant part, because I do have people in my ward who have a variety of problems, and I have some words written by one of my friends here. And she says she's struggled with an eating disorder since the age of 14. Peer pressure to look better sparked a hatred in her mind when she saw herself in the mirror. She would force herself to be sick after eating so the calories would not add to her weight. She would avoid eating altogether if it was possible, often going a full day just eating a banana or an apple. This continued throughout school, and she is now 19. She is physically and mentally scarred for life. She now needs tablets to let her eat, then takes another tablet to help her keep it down. This is no way to live and we need to do better. This motion certainly points us in the right direction, and I would state that the very first paragraph that we have on there actually excludes this person from any support and assistance. The motion that was originally tabled is inclusive. The amendment waters this down very substantially and takes away the support from people like this, and for that reason, I do not support the amendment. The original motion stands. Thank you.
Councillor McKeon.
Thank you, Chair. If people have a look at me, I don't think that they'd be remiss to guess that I've lived with this particular issue for a long time. I'm a size 16, so I'm technically overweight by a lot of the different metrics that we use for this. And I wanted to speak a bit from my personal experience to say that there's a missing ingredient in discussion of weight and health, and that's mental health. I don't think there's anyone in County Durham right now who doesn't know that chips are bad for you. I think the message is out on that, and I don't think that people are going to change their behaviour because of a guide alone. For those people who make choices around food that some of us in this chamber wouldn't like, a lot of that is driven by mental health, and one of the biggest drivers of poor mental health is insecurity and poverty. And one of the reasons why I want to be able to support this amendment is because I'm quite sick of the same old discussions about bodies like mine and the choices that people like me have made. I think that really we need to be looking at mental health and at poverty and at the other factors. Just education alone hasn't been successful. I'm sorry, councillor Holmes, it hasn't. I make the decisions that I make and others like us make the decisions that we make for different reasons than not having a guide. And so I'm supporting today because we do need to start talking about some of the factors outside of simply education. We need to understand more about poverty, mental health and access.
Councillor Gunn.
I'm really pleased that the legal officer, can I just say this first of all, clarified the issue that has been raised about bringing this amendment in this way. At first I wasn't quite sure who councillor Bell was actually criticising, whether it was on the mover and second of this amendment or indeed the officers. Can I also say that I find it quite extraordinary that two members of the cabinet would be criticising officers in this way around bringing this amendment without paper. On this particular amendment, can I just say this? There are several issues here that have been running around here, and some of it is around not understanding what the amendment is about. I find that extraordinary, Chair, because what is there not to understand in an amendment that actually links healthy eating to food poverty? What is there not to understand about that? The link is absolutely crucial to anything that we put out about healthy eating. It's what happens in our communities, wherever we are across this council, whether we're in concerts or Acliff or Bishop Auckland or wherever we are, these are issues. Food poverty is an issue affecting our children and our families. So why don't you get that? Quite extraordinary that you don't. And the other issue, Chair, is around, I'm driving here this morning and I hear on Radio 4 that inflation's going up again and food prices are going up again, and we've got all the other issues, and that will be happening for a long time to come. So is that not an emergency? This is what we're asking in this amendment. Is that not an emergency for children and families in County Durham? Well, in my view, it is, and I fully support this amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Bell. Councillor Wilson.
Yeah, with regards to this, nobody on this side is saying that it is wrong that we should be using healthy eating to support people who want to eat better, to help with obesity, to help with eating disorders. What we are saying is that that is not comprehensive enough. What we are saying is actually there are very set reasons in this county due to the deprivation and the poverty which has been caused by 12 years of neglect from the Conservative Party to this area, taking money out of this area and not supporting councils like ours. Let's not forget, the reason that the Conservatives don't want to go down this route is because it's their government that is responsible for this. I'd ask members over there not to be led by the nose by the Conservatives and once again, stand up for the people of County Durham and turn around and say, actually, we want to say, we want to support you, we want to help you eat better, but also help you out of food, of fuel and all kinds of poverty.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Miller.
Thanks, Chair. I'll put my thanks to the officers on record instead of criticising them. I didn't think criticising officers was allowed in public, but that's probably a matter that will get picked up outside. If we say to our partners, you are only allowed to accept food on the Eat Well Guide, our food banks would be empty, and not because people are using them, because they'll just not get the donations. Food banks rely on people to donate food, and if we say only put in fruit and veg and stuff, that's an extra cost to them as well, and we don't realise that. Food banks need access to all kinds of food because people are desperate and exactly for the reasons that my colleague behind us just said so, so we shouldn't be limiting. This amendment calls on the government to support partners. It doesn't call on our partners to just stick with what's in the guide. It calls for extra help. And can I request a name vote on the amendment, please?
Thank you, councillor.
Chair, the request for a recorded vote needs 10 members.
Councillor Charlton-Lane.
I was going to talk a lot about things like breastfeeding we need to look at, we need to think about babies when they're first born, you know, we need to talk about the Eat Well Guide, but there's people who can't afford food groups from every piece of the Eat Well Guide to make a meal. But what I really can't believe that I've just heard is that councillor Bell has just said that he doesn't think that anybody living in this room is living, going through food poverty. That is so presumptuous. You don't know what people are going through, and I think that that shows a complete detachment from the people that you are meant to be representing and that we are all representing. You cannot presume anymore. This crisis is hitting everybody for so many different reasons, and the fact that you're naively either choosing not to see it or blindsiding people, it's really worrying, and that's the bit that stands out for me today. I can't believe that that was said.
Thank you. Could I bring in James, the monitoring officer, please?
Thank you, Chair. The 30-minute time limit for the debated motions has now elapsed, so the procedure to follow now is to offer the mover of the original motion, councillor Holmes, a right of reply.
Thank you very much. Chair, the amendment that the opposition have put forward, as councillor Bell said, it actually excludes people that we're trying to support here. It restricts the support to those who are suffering from food poverty. I think that everybody in our council deserves help and support, not just those that are in food poverty. Members also refer to the cost of living crisis and that they want to write to government. Yes, we are in a cost of living crisis, but if you want to ask for help and support with the cost of living crisis, I suggest that's in a different amendment because that is a different matter. As to what councillor Jackson says, this is alarming, and I can't imagine the difficulty your friends are having there. And this is exactly why this motion needs to be passed as it was in its original form. Councillors on the other side referred to the neglect by the Conservative Party in County Durham. Hasn't it been the Labour Party that's been in control of County Durham for over a century now? Well, until last year, when the people of County Durham voted to actually get stuff done. The members on the other side want support for food banks. Again, that should be in another motion. It's something completely different. I'm asking for us to support people with trouble, with eating difficulties and with childhood obesity. In addition, I would like to query, because councillor Charlton-Lane referred to Richard Bell as naive. Again, can this be said in the council chamber?
I'll bring James in on that one.
Yes, Chair, thank you. That remark wasn't particularly a remark that I considered to breach any item of the council procedure rules. Obviously, it's not for me to rule on these matters, it's for the Chair to rule on these matters. The Chair didn't rule, so I consider the matter dealt with. Thank you, Chair. So we will now go to a vote on the amendment as put by councillor Hovell. As requested, this will be a recorded vote, so the names of members and which way they voted will appear in the minutes. It will be, one, to support the amendment, two, to vote against the amendment, and three, to abstain from the vote. And I'll inform members once the vote is open. Vote open. original motion, should he wish to exercise it.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm glad to see the amendment's been voted down, but I would be welcome to working with members of the opposition if they want to work with me to bring a motion to council to talk about food poverty, if that's what they want to do. But this motion, as it stands, will provide support which is needed for people who are suffering from childhood obesity and from eating disorders. It asks the council to provide vital support which is needed, for examples like councillor Jackson gave. I don't think I need to say any more on this matter, but I hope that members will agree and pass this motion. Thanks, Chair. Also, Chair, could I request a named vote, please?
Yes, thank you, councillor. We'll make that a recorded vote. Chair will now take a vote on the original motion as moved by councillor Holmes. It will be, one, to support the original motion, two, to vote against the original motion, three, to abstain. And I'll inform everybody when the vote is open. And it will be a recorded vote.
4.58 against, 40 abstentions, three. Motion carried. I will now hand you over to James.
Thank you, Chair. So as I alluded to previously, the 30-minute time limit for motions has now expired. The two remaining motions which are on the agenda will be carried over to the next council meeting in September.
So we move on to item 11, questions from members. No questions have been received for today's meeting. That concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I would like to thank everyone for taking part, and to those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting, thank you for your attendance.